Another caller, please, please, and happy to hear everyone and welcome back. Pleased that so many people turned out, always welcome here and uh and thank you for your attendance, we do appreciate the support. Roll call, as of right now, we have four supervisors present in the very in short, uh number of minutes, we'll have a our fifth supervisor on board. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And where the folks are on the beach.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Van Freees, I am the magistrate district judge here in South Dubaing Township, and I am very grateful for the opportunity to administer the oath of office to these individuals tonight, and shortly thereafter, we're going to administer the oath of office for our uh
Okay, if you folks will raise your right hand, please. Mother love. Repeat after me, please, I state today. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of in South Dubaing Township with fidelity. Next, we'll have the uh raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Brandon Newton, I, Brandon Newton, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of a captain for the South Dubaing Township Fire and Emergency Services to the best of my ability. I pledge to lead with integrity empathy and professionalism upholding the trust placed in me by my department and duty. I vow to mentor support and learn from my team fostering a culture of safety accountability and excellence in all we do. I will ensure that my decisions are guided by fairness respect and the mission to protect life property and the environment with humility I accept the responsibility of leadership adhering to the policies and procedures and promising to serve with unwavering dedication.
Congratulations, everyone. Good luck to you. Thanks for staying. Okay, folks, next on the agenda is uh, you know, beginning our reorganization in twenty twenty six, move to open nominations for chairperson for twenty twenty six, so at this time, uh, I need a second on that uh motion, please. Thank Mr. Grego, okay, I'll accept nominations now for uh chairperson for twenty twenty six for the South Dubaing Township Board of Supervisors.
I'll nominate George Rowan.
Thank you, Mr. Bull.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Uh, motion to uh, no, no other nomination, uh, motion to close nomination for chairperson. Thank you, Mr. ready in a second, please. All in favor of closing nomination for chairperson, please indicate by saying aye. Okay, uh, I will uh move to appoint George Rowan as chairperson for the twenty twenty six uh twenty twenty six year. All in favor of the appointment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero, congratulations, George. Good luck for twenty twenty six, I appreciate it. I'll move on one seat.
Okay, at this time, we are going to open up nominations for vice chairman.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we'll open up uh for nominations.
I nominate Jeff Bull.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of is there any other nominations? Seems how there's no other nominations, we'll close that, all in favor of Jeff Bull being the vice chairman for two thousand twenty six? Say aye. Opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairperson.
Township Solicitor, open nomination or make a motion to um appoint the solicitor for South Dubaing Township. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations for Solicitor?
That's the name our solicitor.
Michael and Associates, I'm sorry, Michael and Associates.
Good, no other nomination.
Do I mention the other names for?
Of course, that's all one motion.
It's all one motion, okay, so it would be making Michael and Associates for um Township Solicitor, it would be Durant, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller to serve as Labor Council and um Metzler and Grifat, Grifodis to serve as the zoning hearing board solicitor for two thousand twenty six, that's one motion.
A motion to approve.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero, yeah. Moves to set the two twenty six, the two thousand twenty six Board of Supervisors meeting to the fourth Tuesday at if this says six o'clock, but um
Well, you know, you want to correct that, you want to along the board votes, well, you can change it to seven.
Okay, this says six o'clock, I preferred seven o'clock, but if everybody wants to leave it, it's six o'clock.
Well, good, so can we open this up for discussion?
Yes, so make a motion to open this.
I'd like to make a motion to open to have a discussion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Up for discussion?
Yeah, I talked with some, a lot of the employees and staff today, and they would like to see it stay at six because a lot of them get here early and they can't actually run home, and then they have to stay in the meetings, and if we move it to seven, some of them are not going to get home till ten thirty, eleven o'clock, and we have long meetings, like take that into consideration, our staff is very well, and I want to take care of them too. We have a great staff.
Any other discussion?
For a suggestion of making it six thirty? So, okay, so
Help you out here, put on this, this doesn't pass, and then you can make another motion, okay, see how this goes.
Okay, well
Read the motion.
Read the motion.
Read the motion again, yes.
To set the two thousand twenty six Board of Supervisors meeting to for the fourth Tuesday of, at each the fourth Tuesday of each month at six P M, except for the months of November, December, which it'll be the third Tuesday at six P M.
Motion to approve, I I moved the proof, okay, you need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, second, now, now there's a discussion, and uh if there's any discussion, we already, excuse us a little bit, we discuss again if you want to, and after, call for question, call the vote.
The only thing that I would say is, there was a discussion when it was changed to six, that a lot of the township residents couldn't get here, and we're actually, we are here to serve residents, so.
And that was based on my new job and getting uh, I'm up, you know, up toward Pittsburgh now, and um to to get out of work and run down here, uh, seven o'clock would have worked better for me.
So come and meet in the middle of the six thirty to help the employees and and to help yourself.
Don't we have to vote on the six and then, if it doesn't pass, then we can change the motion.
A roll call vote for six P M, yeah.
Mr. Bull?
No.
Mr. Grego? Yes. Mr. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
And Mr. Rowan?
No.
Okay, now we can
Okay, so let's make a motion to amend amend item D.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. So we need to open it up and move on.
All right, you made the change, you made the motion.
Do I hear your second, do I have a second? Six thirty, second?
That's a good compromise.
Call for question, call for the booth.
Corp, okay, we're gonna vote on this, uh
You do voice vote.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
No. The three two passed, passed for six thirty, yes.
Moving on, this is great. Uh, move to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as the guide for parliamentary policy uh procedure for the two thousand twenty six year.
So moved.
Second.
We have our, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Motion passes five zero. Move to appoint Peter Stefanski to serve as secretary.
We're gonna table this. Want a second, you want me to second?
I'll second it, you made it, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to table Peter Stefanski as a secretary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Move to appoint Marie Kaufman as treasurer and pension fund administrator.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Discussion closed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Motion to appoint Kristen Philhan as township zoning officer.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five zero. Move to appoint Coatsys as assistant zoning officer.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five zero. Move to designate Washington Financial Bank as the township depository institution.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Although, discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Move to designate the Washington Observer as the official newspaper for two thousand twenty six.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Tax collector. Move to appoint Keystone Collection as local service delinquent tax tax collector per capita delinquent tax and mercantile delinquent tax and real estate and delinquent real estate tax for two thousand twenty six, and Susan Kohler as the real estate tax collector and fire tax collector for two thousand twenty six.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Move to appoint the CPA firm of Cipher and Cipher to conduct the two thousand twenty five year audit.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Approval of the fee schedule, move to approve the schedule setting fees for the two thousand twenty six calendar year.
Second, good.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Move to appoint Bank Bankston Engineer to serve as the township engineer and K L H engineer as the township alternate consulting and M S A engineer for the year two thousand twenty six. M S four, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll make motion.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Nomination and motion for the position of chairman of township vacancy board for one year term until the first Monday in January two thousand twenty seven.
I nominate Bob Jones to serve.
Any other nominations? Nominations is closed, do we have any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Move to appoint Peter Stefanski.
Uh, move the table.
All those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table five zero.
Table R.
Table R, second.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
Of two, okay, then we're on letter R, yep, um, we're going to make a motion to table this.
You can make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
You're a second.
I'll be a second.
All right.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion to table is move closed, move to appoint George Rowan to serve as the township voting delegate for two thousand twenty six P SATS convention.
I'm making a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Uh, right to know officer, motion to appoint uh Peter Stefanski to the right, right to know.
And motion to table it.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tabled? Five zero. Motion to reappoint Jake Gordon to fill the four-year term on the planning commission.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carry five zero, motion to reappoint Fred Pezzuto to the, to fill a four-year term on the planning commission.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry five zero. Motion to reappoint Joe Kapko to fill the four-year term on the planning commission.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero, motion to reappoint Art Sullivan to fill a three-year term on the zoning hearing board.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry five zero to reappoint Art, motion to reappoint Amanda Loveland to a five-year term on the Parks and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Public comment time. The township Board of Supervisors allocates a period of time during this item during this item for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the Board of Supervisors on any matter. Each person addressing the Board of Supervisors is asked, is asked to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have no one signed up.
Nobody answered, okay, thank you. Onto new business. Motion to reopen two thousand twenty six annual municipal budget and appropriately advertise.
I'll make that motion. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
I'm opposed to.
Your vote, okay, should I do a
If you know the three votes, it's rushing up.
Okay.
Three two.
Okay, motion carry three two?
Yeah.
Motion to accept the resignation of Jordan Kramer as interim manager.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, second it, and uh he agreed to stay till the end of the month, right, and help?
Yeah. It should say until January thirty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry five zero. Motion naming the chairman of the Board of Supervisors as staff liaison for the township administration and finance.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You have to
Yeah, I, I'm not going to vote. Yeah.
So it's two two.
It's two two, yeah.
Well, I, I mean it should be three two, I'm holding notes.
Okay, three two to, uh
Yep.
It filled, yeah, okay.
Motion to name the Board of Supervisors chairman and township manager as the primary spokespersons for the Board of Supervisors.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Shouldn't we table this? Yeah, we should table if the solicitor says yes, because Peter's not there yet.
Correct.
Table this, okay. Should we have tabled the last one or not?
No, it's just pertinent to the township manager, Jordan is fine.
So we're gonna table this? We need a second on tabling this?
Okay, good.
Who was the motion?
All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five zero.
We didn't have a discussion on who's gonna be the liaison since it went three two, no. Are we gonna have a liaison for the
No, never have.
Never had before.
That's right, the lights won't turn out, we're good.
I'm fine not having liaisons, they tend to I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that's right, okay, thanks, Russ. Motion to adjust the template for Board of Supervisors meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
I'm in favor, but do we have a, do we have a sample yet?
Yes, we do, it was sent out, Jordan sent out. Sunday.
The only, the only thing I have is we're having two or two comment times, are we allowed to even do that?
Say it again?
It's been done in
Well, I was asking the solicitor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So say the question again?
They want to have See this?
I have not.
I don't know whether it's actually illegal to have discussion times on things that aren't on the agenda.
We have two public comment times.
It's saying the second one from on agenda items. We might want to table this. Did we?
Yeah.
That's been a long time ago, I'm going back twenty years.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
It is fine, you can have anything that is on the agenda or may be on the agenda, so it's a little bit open for interpretation, I guess I would say.
Okay.
So this is, this is acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Now we hope?
Yeah.
All those in favor of uh accepting the template for the Board of Supervisors agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? One?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, before you close the adjourn, I'd like to make a
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda to adopt the Township Policy for all Township checks to be signed by the Township, Township Finance Manager and two Boards of Supervisors.
You, you can't do that.
I can add a motion to the agenda.
Should have been done before the.
Before, before, before we went into, before we went into the.
No, it would have had to been before the agenda had been posted.
Yeah.
Wait up next time.
Yeah, let's have, have it put on.
Bring up the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Okay. That's it.
Let's, let's go through the upcoming meetings to be sure that this is all correct for the public. I can do that.
Anything I see we need to change to twenty?
Twenty seven.
Year, it'll, at six thirty, it'll be January twenty seventh, February twenty fourth, March twenty fourth, April twenty eighth, May twenty sixth, June twenty third, July twenty eighth, August twenty fifth, September twenty second, October twenty seventh, November seventeenth, and December fifteenth.
We have to change the time when this is.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was meaning.
Change to the six thirty.
Do you want to mention the added meeting? We don't know when the added meetings are going to be for the Budget Workshop. Right, well, the next meeting is going to be, the, January twelfth, okay? That's.
There is a zoning hearing board that night at six P M as well.
On the twelfth? On the twelfth.
That's what it is showing.
No, it showed the age.
So you got the HOA.
The zoning hearing board. On the twelfth.
Is that correct, Tristan? Yeah, and that is their reorganizing.
So do they not have it on the eighth?
On the eighth is the Planning Commission.
Yeah, Ace Planning, twelfth is zoning hearing.
At what time?
Six P M.
No, sorry.
Okay, so when?
Thirteen, six P M. A six, six or seven, whatever you want, thirteen.
The thirteenth? At six o'clock, thirteenth at six o'clock. And that's, that's a special meeting for, um, budgetary items.
Take the power six thirty.
So. Okay. Six thirty.
You'll tend to as one.
Special meeting, January thirteenth at six thirty at the Township Building for budget. Discussion. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sure.
On the website, the head of the agenda, some different things. I don't know, we checked that out, they went on seconds, because the time, and some of the, probably, follow up there. Time for this meeting, five thirty eight, and we had, it just.
Yeah.
The regular meeting, I thought, I didn't know, it just, you may want to have a look into that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And is there any, oh, there was a public comment, nobody, does anybody want to do any, anything at the end?
No, I wouldn't break it down.
Motion to adjourn? I like the motion.
What do we have, uh?
We already have that.
I'll be the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Five zero to adjourn.
Thanks, everyone.